Okay, so we're gonna get this meeting started. Welcome to the Montclair City Council meeting on this August 21st. As we traditionally begin, we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And let's just remember all the folks in Maui who are dealing with the devastation of the fires. And obviously, there's people in Baja California and parts of California all dealing with the devastation of the recent storm we just had. Please stand, and then I'll have the city attorney, not the city clerk, announce those individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be provided by Fire Department Chaplain Jimmy Crowell, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
For you this evening, Lord, we humbly just ask, Lord, that you just bless this meeting tonight, Lord, that you go before all of us, Lord, that you go before the council, Lord, all the council members here, Lord, give them wisdom, Father God, in how to handle the things of this city, Lord, this evening, Lord. We just thank you for them, Lord. We ask that you be with all the speakers here tonight, Lord, that you just give them peace in their heart, Lord, and a way to just interact with each other, Lord, that they may find peace and resolutions to the things that are gonna go on here tonight, Lord. We just ask that you fill this place with your Spirit, Lord. We ask, Lord, as the mayor asks, Lord, that you be with those that are displaced now, Lord, Father God, those in Maui and those all around us, Lord, that are just taking devastation to fires and storms and things that are happening around, or even the earthquake of North, Lord, just things are happening all over, Lord. We ask that you be with our firefighters and our first responders and our police department, Lord, that you protect them, Lord, be with their families and be with them, Lord. We just thank you, Lord. We just ask your blessings on this evening, Lord, in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Lopez. Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Rue.
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre.
Present. And before we begin with the presentation, I just want to recognize our staff, public work staff, police, fire, and other staff members to making sure that Montclair was safe this past Sunday, yesterday, due to what started as a hurricane and then turned into a tropical storm, Hillary. And I'm proud to announce that was very little damage here in the city of Montclair, just street, tree branches and debris in the streets. I know that we gave about 2,500, 2,500 sandbags on Saturday, but Monica, go ahead.
Good evening. I believe it was a total of about or close to 4,000.
4,000 sandbags were given out. Again, this is staff that came out on Saturday and Sunday, and of course, out early this morning, making sure that the ramps for the schools were up. And so I'm very proud of our staff here in Montclair. So now we'll begin with the presentations. I'm gonna ask that the police chief, the police come up, and we're gonna do a certificate of recognition presented to Jorge Grajeda for his courageous actions, and I'm gonna ask the city council, please join me.
Good afternoon, members of council. I'm honored today to honor a, not a resident of Montclair, but someone who is visiting family in Montclair back in January in 2021 when tragedy almost struck. Before I proceed, I would like to call up to the front Jorge Grajeda. Back on January 2021 at about 11:00 a.m., Montclair Police and Montclair Fire was dispatched to a call of a house fire in the 9900 block of Ramona Avenue. When our officer arrived, he immediately noticed a large amount of smoke coming from the rear portion of a residence at the location. Immediately upon our arrival, our officer was flagged down by Mr. Grajeda, who advised he had some information on not only the fire, not only the fire, but there might be somebody inside of the residence. He immediately identified himself as a Long Beach police officer of, I'm sorry, how many years? 28 years, Long Beach police officer, but he immediately stepped up and advised our officer that somebody was inside the residence. He knew this because there was a car parked at the location. This is information that we didn't have when we responded. So without hesitation, both our officer and Mr. Grajeda went to the front door, knocked on it loudly several times, no one was answering. They decided to both enter the residence because we believed that this person was in there. Thank you to the information that you provided. Once inside the residence, Mr. Grajeda and our officer checked door to door inside the residence and found the elderly resident inside her bedroom on her bed, confused, suffered from some medical problems, had no idea the house was even on fire. They were able to, despite of the smoke that was starting to come into the house, they were able to assist her out of bed, escort her to safety across, across the street while they continued to check the inside of the residence, but they didn't look anybody else. Again, once we talked to the female across the street, she was confused, and she was very thankful for her actions. She was transported just for precautions, but she did not sustain any injuries in this incident. Mr. Grajeda, if it was not for your quick thinking and contacting and communicating with our officers at scene, I am confident that the fate of this residence would likely have been much worse, much worse than it would have been a tragic outcome. And for that, you're being committed for your actions that day, and I speak on behalf of the victim in the Montclair Police Department, congratulating you for your courageous actions during an emergency situation at great personal risk that you came to the aid of a resident of Montclair. Oftentimes, we respond to these fires or things like this, and we don't get much help from bystanders, and you know, had we not known that information that somebody was inside the house, for sure, I believe, would have ended in tragedy. Not only that, not only did you tell us you, you sprang into action even being off duty and entered the residence with, you know, us as officers, we don't carry very much protective gear for fires, you know, but we can do what we can to get there. So I'm confident that your actions and your selfishness is what led to her survival of that incident. And on another note, Mr. Grajeda is retiring in about five days, or about five more days of duty, so we congratulate him on that as well with Long Beach Police Department. And again, I wish you, I'm glad you wish you a great retirement. I wish you would have done your 28 years here at Montclair, but maybe you have a few left in you. You can get them over here as a lateral, I don't know, but we'd have loved to have you on board, but they're lucky to have you over there, and your family should be, is, I'm sure, proud of you for your whole career, but especially these events. And you're also recognized by American Red Cross as well, and rightfully so. So for that, we congratulate you.
Mr. Grajeda, I wanna say thank you for your courageous act here in Montclair for a Montclair resident, you know, which would turn out to be a very serious fire incident. It wasn't for your heroic, along with the heroics of our police department, someone could have died in this fire. So thank you very much for your bravery in saving a life. And on behalf of the city of Montclair, we want to present you a certificate of recognition, again, for your heroic activity, and thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public who wish to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda. Where about there's an item on the consent calendar, you have five minutes to address the city council. If you're on, in the audience, you fill out the speaking request card, you submit that to Monica. If you're on Zoom, you raise your hand, future request to speak. If you're on the telephone, you hit star nine on the telephone to request to speak. So I'm going to hand this over to our city clerk and let me know, speakers you have. I know we have some speakers that want to speak, I think one on consent calendar and one under business item.
And three on non-agenda items.
Three non-agenda, okay, so what we do is on the, we'll take those, one on consent calendar, we'll do it at that time, same thing on the one on item, on the business item at that time. So we'll just, we'll just take the non-agenda items, and if you do have a consent calendar item you wish you haven't submitted a card, this is a good time to fill the card out and submit it over to Monica again. Go ahead.
The first speaker tonight will be Bill Kaufman.
Hello. It's me again. We're reaching a crossroads here. I'm being compelled to move forward with our location on Central Avenue, and if not, they may lease it to else, to someone else. And I could tell you, if we lose this location, we're back to square one, and we'll never find a location quite as good as this, that is childproof, safe. It's everything that any city would want, and I've been through 11 cities and looked at various locations, and we've never had anything that was close to this. So that being said, I put myself up there, and I said to myself, what does the city want from us that we haven't given them? What question is unanswered? And I really couldn't come up with one. I mean, we don't need a workshop, we don't need zoning. I mean, you have a, a group that is life scanned, got 25 years of combined service, they're financially able to move forward, and if in fact, we don't nail down this location, we go back and we've looked through the city, and I have my realtor here, and there just isn't much that, I mean, there are some locations, but they're on the street, people walk by, you know, we're concerned ourselves with kids looking in and seeing things and so forth. You know, where we are, second floor, guard on the bottom floor, we've, we feel we've complied with, we have complied with everything that the state has required. We are ready to submit an application for a business license, and I, for the life of me, can't understand what we haven't covered that would make the council feel better and civic-minded, you know. I know it's, and again, I am not promoting the use of cannabis, believe me, I don't want my grandkids to, that's not what I'm promoting. This is an economic opportunity. We're dropping over 100 grand a month just in this one location, and it just has, someone has to say, okay, we've complied with everything, and if we haven't, I would like to know what it's gonna take to comply, because I'm gonna meet with Shoe City tomorrow, and I'm gonna try to, is that my beep?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
You still have two minutes.
Rancho Cucamonga only gives you three minutes, so I don't, I don't know. But again, I implore you, if there's something that we need to do to comply, to anything, I don't, you know, I don't think we need workshops, we don't need zoning, we have completely covered the safety of the location, and we have the resume of the constituents, which is second to none. So again, I'm gonna meet tomorrow to see what they will do as far as giving me some leeway, but other than that, I'd like to reach out to someone to tell them, where do we stand? Are we weeks, months, years? I mean, where are we? I don't have that, that answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
The second speaker is Tiffany Ramos.
Hello, Tiffany.
Hello. I wrote a letter, so I have something to read off. I also have letters for you guys as well, so at the end of myself speaking, I would like to hand them out. Hello, city Montclair council members. First, I would like to thank you for your time and came up today to ask for your help. Some of you may know me from the time of running Montclair Little League. When I decided it wasn't the right fit for me, I moved on with travel ball. I have been running my nonprofit travel team for about a year now. We don't have any sponsors, and everything comes out of my parents' pocket. We divide everything evenly among the parents, which can also be pricey for us still. I have some amazing parents that believe and trusted me with their children's baseball dreams. We are not your average travel ball team. We don't have costly membership fees. Some of my parents are single parents, some live in the city of Montclair's low housing income, and some are just struggling families. When I built this team, I wanted to make sure it was affordable for anyone who wanted their child to play travel ball. I was told by Montclair City Recreational Supervisor that in order to rent a field, I would need insurance. I also asked, how can I receive a field for free? I was told I needed to be a nonprofit, and I had to have insurance. Within months of starting my team, we had insurance and had become a nonprofit organization. We have been working hard and patiently waiting for a phone call or letter from the city, have recently received a letter from the mayor letting us know we can rent XX Park. We were very excited and super appreciated to have the letter. I did call Montclair's recreational supervisor to find out pricing. I was told it would be $20 an hour for a field and 25 for an employee. That is $45 an hour. We practice three times a week for two hours a day. The total for rental for a month is $1,080. That is an extra $108 a month I would have to ask my baseball parents for, which at this time, I know myself nor my parents can afford extra fees like this. I did ask, where did they come up with rental fees? And I was told from surrounding cities. The city of Montclair Mount rents a normal travel team, a field with lights for $45 an hour. I don't believe price, the pricing was fair. There is a travel team who practices at Saratoga Park two times a week. I'm not sure if they rent the park from Montclair Little League or through the city, but if they do rent the field for Montclair Little League, that would mean Montclair Little League is breaking the contract with the city. At Kingsley Field, there is an organized baseball tournament happening every Sunday. I did notify the city about the event. I was told the city doesn't work Sundays, so it's, they can't really do anything about it. I really don't mean to mess anything up for these other travel teams, but I'm hurt that my boys are treated unfair. I did everything right, and we are still being treated unfairly and still being harassed. One of my players and coach went to Saratoga Park to play on the field. Our coach wearing a night shirt was harassed by Montclair Little League's president. This coach is a 19-year-old college student. I didn't have anything to do with Montclair Little League president's actions, but I still apologize to our coach. I felt bad and sad in that anyone wearing a night gear would have to be harassed at a public park. This is not the first time someone has felt harassed by Montclair Little League's president. I myself had to deal with harassment. The time I was employed by the city of Montclair, he decided to call the city recreational supervisor to ask if I was employed by the city of Montclair. It's very uncomfortable trying to work with the city and having people call to see if I worked and receiving text messages saying that people are messing with my car. My baseball team should not have to deal with treatment like this because they choose not to play Little League. I wish my team can sign up for Little League in the spring like most travel teams do, but in our case, we can't because we all feel uncomfortable, and my children should not feel this way. There are plenty of sports organizations that use your faculties in parks for free, which I'm sure they don't have insurance or pay fees to use them. At your skate park, I see trainers teaching young children how to perform in skating, private coaches teaching kids how to play basketball on city courts. I see tennis matches happening on the court without city permission. All we need is support from a city my team is proud to represent. We have been through a lot, and like I stated before, my travel team isn't like others. We don't have fancy equipment, training faculties, a field, or even a restroom, but my players work hard and they are amazing kids, and I don't give up on them because they don't give up on me. So I'm asking you today to please help us out by lowering rental fees. If it helps, I can open and close the park, as I've done before with my time with Montclair Little League. I've always been a dedicated person to the city of Montclair and have volunteered myself and my family throughout the years since I moved to the city in 2006. My own children attend school in the city, and I don't mind helping out where I can. I just wish the city can support me the same way. Thank you for your time, and I hope to hear from you soon.
Thank you. You still have a letter you want to give us?
Yes.
Or something? Go ahead. You can give it to our assistant city clerk here, or deputy city clerk, excuse me, Allison. Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
The final speaker for non-agenda items will be John Davis.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I've been living in the city of Montclair since 98, and I'm here on behalf of not just Tiffany, but all the baseball teams around here for travel ball. They, they need a fair location, someplace to practice, because as way things going today, travel ball is taking over the Little Leagues, okay? But we're not trying to take over the Little Leagues with, at least I know the organization that my travel ball team that my son plays on. Not only do we play for the travel ball team, but we also still play within the Little League, okay? This is, this is helping our kids stay off the streets, making these gentlemen jobs easier, and our kids are our future. Not only are we teaching them how to play the game, but we're teaching them things of everyday life. Baseball is the biggest failure sport, and if you could teach a kid how to play baseball, they're failing up, if you get up to the bat and you hit three balls out of 10, you're considered really awesome. Imagine teaching these kids these skills in life, okay? I don't know why we can't practice at Saratoga Park, but I feel that anyone that's within this residence paying taxes should be able to. I mean, I believe, I read an article that they was reading in, in 2020, how we wanted to get baseball back into the Little Leagues over here in Saratoga. I, I strongly feel that whatever the reasons that we're not allowing these teams to play, you're hurting our kids, the future over here. I'm gonna hit on the high school real quick. We are a high school baseball coach over there this year for freshmen. Now, with the kids that we're bringing along already, I've seen kids that couldn't hit a ball or throw a ball or have any confidence have confidence now. They're not afraid of doing things that they were, were afraid to do six months to a year ago, you know? I started off with this lady over here, and now I'm with the gentleman back there. Alls we're asking for is a place for our kids to play, to keep them off the streets, and keep them safe. And whatever it takes for this city to do that, it would be great and highly appreciated, and it would be a benefit not only to, to the kids right now, but it's gonna help out our high school as the kids get older also. That's basically I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John, you're forgetting one other coach.
Excuse me?
You're forgetting one other coach.
Coach Ben?
Uh-huh.
From the Little League, I'm sorry. He wasn't here with us last year when we were struggling more. You had it there when you was there, it was great.
There is actually one additional speaker, Joanna Lubin.
Hello. So, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to come once more. I bring updates, and unfortunately, a family emergency came up, so I wasn't able to make the last meeting, but I did want to bring you all an update on what's going on at Brook Street. So let me start off, I guess, first by saying that there was an arrest made on July 18th with regards to the robbery that I personally encountered. I want to thank Chief Reed, Lieutenant Kamonski, and all of Montclair PD for all their hard work and cooperation, because they really truly went beyond, above and beyond their duties, and we really are appreciative of everything they're doing with the limited resources that they have. Unfortunately, this individual was released on July 24th, so thanks to our system, he was only in jail for six days. So, you know, that really just kind of rubs us the wrong way. The second topic is that unfortunately, we seem to continue being a target for these vandals and these, I guess, burglaries that keep occurring. We've had in these past month and a half, we've had two more windows broken, they also vandalized our garage door and damaged it further. So it got to the point where we actually had to install bars outside the windows, which gives us a little bit of a sense of peace and security, you know, knowing that if they do decide to burglarize or break in, it'll give us a chance to at least run and hide, you know, until they can get in. Third, there was another arrest made, so two, within the past month and a half. This particular incident was in connection with the vandalism, and the gentleman was arrested. We actually just received word this past week that due to a plea deal that he was given by the San Bernardino DA, he was released already. So like I said, unfortunately, this is just, you know, everybody knows that these individuals, once they come out, they go to the same spots, and we have seen them roaming again. The first individual that was arrested was spotted right around the corner from our business and went as far as to intimidate some of my coworkers by yelling obscenities and yelling at, you know, pointing his finger and basically telling them, I know who you are, and I know what you did, and, you know, that's not really very pleasant when they're trying to just go have their lunch and, you know, take a little break. We're at a point right now where we really feel, we're fearful of retaliation because we obviously know that these individuals know that we're cooperating with the police and we're trying to do everything possible to get them off our streets. And so it does worry us that they're being released from jail so quickly. We completely understand Montclair Police is understaffed, and that is why, one of the reasons why a lot of these individuals are not being arrested. However, I would like to find out if there's any way in the city's budget for some added security or patrolling in the area. From what I've learned, if they're not high-risk, putting someone in immediate danger, then it's really not a priority to come out. Obviously, the call does get answered. I did receive clarification on that, and I was very grateful for Chief Reed explaining that, because a lot of, a lot of us in the community are not really aware of how the system works. You know, we expect, we call the police, and we want them there, you know, that's, but that's not how it happens, because of course, we know there's other incidents that are more pressing than, you know, somebody looking at you threateningly or, you know, roaming around. And we understand that there is, there are priorities before the officers can actually come out and investigate, but they do eventually do it. However, like I said, I just have an ultimate question for the city of Montclair is with the, the situation of the homeless, the drug addicts, and all the transient individuals and dangerous individuals being released from jail, is there something that could be done? Because I appreciate you guys' time and concern, especially Councilmember Ben Lopez, he came out as well and spoke with us, gave us some memorandum that was passed out, so we really appreciate all the input, because you could tell that you guys are trying to work with us, you guys are trying to do everything possible. However, we want to know if there's anything else we can do, or if there's anything you guys can do to help us remedy these situations. And I guess the final thing is, I did speak with a lot of our neighboring businesses, and most of them are actually very pleased. Some, you know, most of them have watched the, the live feed on YouTube, and they were very pleased with your response, and we, we keep, we've kept them up to date on what's going on, Chief Reed's actions coming out, the officers coming out and, you know, talking to us. All that is greatly appreciated, but like I said, we feel there's, there has to be more, there has to be something else that could be done to make our community safe and to actually get this fixed. Obviously, it's not gonna get fixed right away, but is there like something that can...
Well, the answer to your question is, the first needs to happen is, Sacramento needs to get their act together and start locking people up in jail. And I know, I can't really speak on this because of the Brown Act, but I want to reassure you that you call 911, we're gonna come out, and we're gonna deal with the situation. It doesn't matter, I know, it's gonna be either a priority call, lower priority call, an officer is going to respond. But the problem, the challenges we have today in our society is too prawn. One, we have a lot of people in the streets that probably should be locked up. We have a lot of people in the streets that probably should be in some type of a social or mental facility, which they're not, which are also causing problems out there. And frankly, you know, we have society today, you look at our society today, we got people break, you know, 30 people walk into Nordstrom's and just stealing stuff, stuff I didn't really see a whole lot, but here in the last two, three years, so you have to ask yourself, what is the people's mentality today? So, you know, we are gonna do our best with our police department, we are out hiring more officers, we are fully staffed as far as patrol officers, but the best thing we could do is you gotta call 911. We can assist you on security ideas out there, what can you do to improve your security perhaps, fences, some things you already talked about, to beef up at least, at least, especially when you're closed, cameras, there's probably other things. I know it's one thing that, at the, on, on Mountain Avenue, at the end of Mountain Avenue, underneath the, under, under pass, is there is a seven foot, eight foot concrete wall that seals out the, the railroad property to that area of underground, Mount now, perhaps that could be the same thing, we could talk to the railroad or Union Pacific, and if they can maybe add that to the end of Benson, that will at least eliminate some of the traffic coming from the railroad. So, but, you know, we're gonna do our best, and maybe add, I'll, I'll show you pictures afterwards, I took a picture of it, so.
Oh, thank you, I really do appreciate it, and like I said before, if there's anything that we can help as a community, we as a business are more than willing to spread the word to the other businesses and also give you a hand in any way that, that can make the situation be resolved as soon as possible.
Thank you, and I, I have been driving through the neighborhood as well, so, many times, so.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
Yes, Councilman Lopez.
Mr. Mayor, just an idea or a thought to the chief, if it hasn't already been entertained, perhaps a coffee in that area one day with the business owners and anyone else interested, just to keep the, put them at ease perhaps, and let them know that we're there, not, not saying that we're not there, because I've seen the call logs and we're, we're doing the best we can with the resources we have, so thank you for that, but just...
Yeah, I would suggest if you wanna have a coffee or wanna have another meeting, we can come out there to the site and be more than happy to talk to the business owners, business owners out there, so no problem. I wanna address real fast the tribal league, you know, youth sports is very important in Montclair, and I think we've done a really good job, especially since the pandemic, get everything going, or obviously, you spoke of the little leagues, the Montclair Girls' Softball League, our Youth Basketball League, our after-school programs, and a number of stuff to really get our youth programs very much occurring in Montclair. You know, we only have so much baseball fields, we do have costs associated with maintaining fields and, and costs related to staff time and everything else. You know, again, I don't know how the dollar amount was raised, I assume there was a study that was done, Marsha, that came up that dollar amount, not, that's just, we just look at the surrounding cities, but we actually have a study that does, it looks at salaries and overhead costs and everything else to make sure that that is a legitimate cost there. If we allow one tribal league to come to Montclair under a deep discount, we're gonna have more travel leagues come here to Montclair, and we're gonna be overwhelmed with travel leagues, am I correct? It's part of the issue, Marsha, am I correct? If you wanna speak, Marsha?
Sure, we really are looking at the whole fee schedule as a whole right now, I know that's, needs to be updated, it's likely some of those fees might even be higher than the, the fees that we quoted were from years ago. But, for example, that $25 fee was for two staff to be able to go and be together when they're opening and closing, and that was when they were 1250 an hour. So that's why it was $25 for the staff.
Right.
But yeah, we are, you know, the field space is limited of what's available, and we're looking at Essex, and that's not a field that has lights, that's another, you know, it's, it's in a residential community, it's not likely that field will ever have lights, but it's, you know, an option that might be available to the travel ball teams.
Okay, and then as far as other travel leagues playing in Montclair without permits, I mean, are we out there...
That we'll need to, you know, look at, and, you know, look at that further, but definitely that is not something that is, that I'm aware of, that had been happening, but we'll need to, to look at that further.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public hearings, and we have only one item, I'm gonna hand over the city manager to introduce the item.
Mr. Mayor, appears there's a PowerPoint presentation for this evening's item, and Ms. Horetti, our Public Works Director, has asked to make the presentation.
It just went away.
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pretam, City Council, staff and residents, I'm here to discuss the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, pronouns KUPKA, it is in the Public Contract Code Sections 22,000 to 2250, and these sections are known as the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. So what is KUPKA? Basically, it will allow, it's, it's a alternative bidding procedure that would allow the city staff to award small contracts in a faster way, and, and it will give us the flexibility to change the formal bid limits from 5,000 to 200,000, and it would also allow our city staff to either do the work or negotiate contracts up to $60,000, and it would allow us again to do an informal bid process for projects between 60,000 to 200,000. So what is a public project under the Public Contract Code Section 22002? Basically, is for the construction, reconstruction, erection, renovation, improvement, repair work involving any publicly owned lease or operated facility, including painting or repainting of those facilities. A public project does not mean maintenance work, so for purposes of this section, basically routine, recurring, or usual work for the preservation of protection, protection of any publicly operated facility is not, will not fall under this alternative bidding system, nor minor repainting or resurfacing of streets that are less than one inch, actually, and also landscaping, but we go through this, through a procedure, a bidding procedure for this, so we can get different bids, and we already have a contractor in place to do all of our landscape maintenance. So why, why do we wanna do this? Basically, to save time and money, to fast-track smaller projects, because sometimes it is difficult to go through the whole procedure of putting a bid package, and then we don't get enough bids anyhow. So this will give us the leverage we need to complete small projects in a timely manner. And this is just a table kinda summarizing what I just explained, any projects under 60,000 can be performed by a negotiated contract or a purchase order, or it can be completed by our own staff, and as long as we keep accounting procedures, so we keep track of the costs, and any projects between 60,000 to 200,000 would be done through this informal procedure, which will require us to maintain an annual list of qualified contractors, which we already do through Planted Bids, and any projects over 200,000 need to be, go through the formal bidding procedure. So we are requesting that the city manager's contract authority be increased from 15,000 to 60,000 for these type of projects, and to approve this alternative informal bidding process for projects between 60,000 up to 200,000. And again, this will reduce the extensive bidding documents that we need to prepare for every small project, saving us time in getting those projects completed quicker. And again, this will require adoption of a resolution to become subject to this act, and as well as an ordinance to adopt the informal bidding procedures for projects under So this is just a list of some projects under 60,000 that will benefit from adopting, adopting this alternative bidding procedure, there's a list there such as slurry projects, HVAC repairs, elevator, we don't have elevators, roof repairs, fencing repairs, carpet replacement, windows, you know, a lot of different types of projects that we can apply this to. So in summary, just it better serve the public and, and us as well, our, our limited staff. The city attorney will still need to approve all the contracts, as well as the city manager's approval will be required, and specifically, if it wasn't approved through the annual budget, we will still require insurance and maybe bonding, depending on the project, and thus, this will give us greater flexibility to complete our projects. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mayor Pretam Johnson, actually, excuse me, before I go, I got Mr. Brown Act here, I gotta open with a public hearing, do we have any speakers that wish to address the city council on this item? Nobody on Zoom land? No? Nobody raised their hands on Zoom, just request to speak? Nope? Okay, so we have no speakers, we'll close the public hearing, matter goes back to the city council, and we'll start with Mayor Pretam Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have one quick question, as I read through the staff report, the thing that I was really looking for, I think this is a great idea, but the thing that I was looking for, if there's any requirement as to the location of, for the ones that are over 60,000, 60,000 to 200,000, the people who do that work, that we, that work on those contracts, are, is there any requirement for them to be local? Because we've, as it's been demonstrated, we can't depend on China to send us stuff, so can all of the projects be done with local contractors for the ones that have to go out to bid?
Yes, so when, we use Planted Bids to bid our projects, and usually there's a code as to what type of work is needed, and so we send that out to all eligible contractors. We can, I guess, try to see the ones that are local and only send it to them, so we, we could, but...
Mr. Mayor, if I may add...
Sometimes we're, we, we have a hard time finding contractors locally, so that's why we open it to pretty much everyone who's qualified.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, the city's purchasing policy does allow for a preference for local contractors, so that would continue to apply despite the fact that the council may consider moving towards adoption of the ordinance that is specified in the agenda report, so we would always have a preference for local bidding.
Excellent, thank you very much for your responses.
Councilman Lopez.
Madam Public Works Director, Mr. City Manager, the, the act itself and the revisions that were enacted by Assembly Bill 1047, does it address Government Code Section 4217, which addresses the availability for local governments or any government entity to bypass the bidding process entirely if the project can be funded through savings? Is that affected in any way?
So what do you mean funded through savings?
Government Code Section 4217 allows for a project that a city enters into to bypass bidding, going out to bid, and the process entirely if the project can be demonstrated and proven to be self-funded through the savings in which it generates.
Okay, so that is a practice and a policy related to the government code that the city has never complied with, simply because we feel that it's better that we go out to bid so that we can get the best available price for a project, and this does not necessarily alleviate us from doing that, so we will still look at securing the best opportunity for the city as, as it relates to costing, so generally, as a rule, we have not applied with that particular code of the general government, of the general government code.
I, I would like for us, when a situation arises, and if it fits the need, to possibly entertain that provision, because it does, it would save us several steps along the process, and in return, it actually generates a savings on the project and money back into the general fund.
We will look at that, but I'm not certain that that complies with the requirements under the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act and Assembly Bill 1047, but we will look at that to see if there's an allowance for us to consider that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, never, I've never, in my 26 years, never heard of this code, and...
Well, there was a project that the city of Upland engaged in about maybe five to six years ago.
Okay.
They had about a $12 million savings on the project, it was funded through savings, didn't have to go to bid.
Well, I, I guess, 26 years, every project has to go out for bid, construction project, this includes all the projects I'm involved in at SBCTA, MetroLink, and a lot of the GORI agencies, this is the first time I really heard about it, I'm not sure, I'd like to see the legal opinion on that, and, well, we'll, we'll have staff look into, but that's, that's, that's interesting. Okay, I just like to add one provision to this ordinance, I'd like to see that any project awarded by the city manager of over $60,000 that will at least get a report on, a quarterly report, and to be on the city council agenda, so this way at least we know what the city manager approved, this will include the, the vendor name, the dollar amount, the type of project, and the date it was awarded, I think that's just good information for us to have, so we know what's, what's going on. So can we add that to the ordinance, Diane? Or, or is there a policy manual that we have, we can add it to the policy? I would suggest that that's an administrative process, that does not need to be added to the ordinance, in any event, it's not a significant change, and I don't think that it necessitates, necessitates a new first reading, but we would certainly add that administrative. Is there a purchase manual, Ed?
Yes, it would be added into that.
Can we add to the purchase manual then? Okay, then my motion, my, my motion will be that, that we add it to the purchase, to the purchase manual. So I don't see any more speakers here, so can, we need...
Mr. Mayor, I'd be inclined to second, but I, I wanted to just ask a question, how soon would that amendment you're asking for on the purchase manual be brought to us?
Well, that'll be part of a motion directing staff to put it in the purchase manual.
The purchasing manual, because of this new ordinance, that'll be something that finance will be working on to update, and will also be including other items related to SB 1383, we'll incorporate all that into the purchasing manual.
Perfect.
When will we see that?
Next few months, hopefully.
Okay.
It'll take some time to get it all updated.
Okay.
It hasn't been done since 2014, so it's gonna take a little time to...
We're due.
Yeah.
All right, I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
With that, actually, I'm gonna, so we need, we need one motion on the resolution, I need a second motion on the ordinance, I guess the motion on the resolution can, can include my request to add it, to add the, the reporting requirements into the purchase manual, so maybe I'll start, I'll lead off then, so move to Consider Option Resolution Number 23-3404, including the motion is that any, any item approved by the city manager over $60,000, the city council will get a quarterly update of projects awarded by the city manager, that includes the vendor, project type, dollar amount, date awarded, and this will be added to the purchasing manual.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by myself, second by Mr. Lopez, let's vote electronically. That's adopted 5-0, now I need a second motion on the actual ordinance, who wants to lead off on that?
Still moved.
Second. Okay, so we're gonna make the motion to adopt the Consider Ordinance Number 90, Number 23-1004, this be declared as a first reading, be read by number title only, did I say correctly? And let's go ahead and vote first. And that's adopted 5-0, now city clerk, go ahead.
Ordinance Number 23-1004, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Montclair amending Section 3.08.010 of the Montclair Municipal Code related to informal bidding procedures for certain public works contracts pursuant to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Okay, that's again adopted, and I will move down to Consent Calendar, I believe we have a speaker on a consent calendar item, so let's go ahead and take that speaker first.
amending Section 3.08.010 of the Montclair Municipal Code related to informal bidding procedures for certain public works contracts pursuant to the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act.
Okay. That's again adopted, and now we'll move down to Consent Calendar. I believe we have a speaker on a consent calendar item, so let's go ahead and take that speaker first. Is there a speaker? Somebody submitted a speaking card on a consent calendar item? Yeah, let's do it right now, then.
I do think we need to then set a public hearing for the second reading for the ordinance, since that was not part of the motion.
That was part of the motion.
Okay, it was part of the motion.
Yeah. First reading, and then what was second reading, September 18.
Okay. Sounds good to me, then.
So for Item C1, Karina Kihada.
Come on up.
Hello, council mayor. My name is Karina Kihada. I'm with the Montclair, the Renegades Travel Ball Team. I'm their team mom assistant, anything that they need, really. All of our families and our, our boys are from, or participate in Montclair Little League. Most of them within the All-Star teams for the 12 and 10 year. Our families are Montclair families as well. So I'm here today to request or inquire the same as Tiffany, same as Sean. We're looking to have a field that our boys can call home. We also have our nonprofit, our team insurance, practices, insurance, everything that's needed. I've reached out multiple times to the city, emails, phone calls with the Parks and Rec Department, with no response in regards to a field, even renting a field. I was advised Essex Park was not available. It was in contract with All City Baseball, I believe it was. So I'm just here today to request for somewhere safe for our boys to practice with lights. And that's all. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. And I think we addressed this earlier today. You'd be more happy if you would to talk to Marsha Richter, our director of, director of human services, plus she also charged human resources, too. But you can also send us a letter, myself or Marsha, the city manager, and we will respond to your letter as well. Great, thank you. Okay. And I just want to, I know this item was pulled off C1. I just want to recognize the Little Leagues, the Golden Girls Softball League. Again, I stated before, during the pandemic, they were out of action. The first year came back, very little youth participation. They've been able to grow the leagues, and both leagues. I'm very proud of these two leagues, and I'm very proud of all the organizations here at Montclair to, to go out of their way to, to make our children have a better community. So I'm gonna start with my left. Anybody wish to pull an item on the left? Anybody?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull D like David, one.
D is David, David one? Be careful with David, by the way, there's another David in the audience, just, just warn you. Okay. And then how about my right?
C1, Mr. Mayor.
C is one. Okay, we got a C1. All right. So we'll go ahead and start with C1, then.
I intentionally kept quiet during the comments that were expressed by the three speakers on the topic until this issue got brought up. And I do think they relate. We're being asked, again, for those in the audience and those watching that don't have the agenda in front of them, to approve a contract that we've done many years for Montclair Little League and Golden Girls to use their fields for the remaining six months or so of the year, and spells out certain terms for them. For those of you that know me, I came from Montclair Little League, the world of Montclair Little League coaching for about four or five years. And that's how I met the individuals in the room on the topic. Montclair Little League, based on this contract, is only being asked to basically deposit a total of $800, 300 for, to ensure the proper care and cleanup of the snack bar, restrooms, towers, et cetera. And then $500 deposit as a security to ensure the proper and prompt payment of any incurred damages to the facilities associated with the league. That's $800. That is to be refunded at the end of the contract, should there not be any damages or unnecessary cleaning that needs to be done by city staff. I'm not against the contract. I voted for it consistently. As a matter of fact, when we, I believe in 2021, the issue of opening up the parks early was brought before us. I was the only lone member of the council to open the parks early at that time. So I'm definitely in favor of the kids playing. My, my concern is this. I have had discussions with the mayor over the travel league teams, trying to get them access to a field. If we're going to give the entity, Montclair Little League and Golden Girls, Golden Girls is not necessarily an issue here, because their fields are softball fields, but predominantly Montclair Little League. If we're going to give them basically free use of the field, as long as they agree to these terms, why then should we not give a contract for usage of a park, including possibly Saratoga, to the two legitimate travel league teams that we have now? I was told, make sure that they have at least 60% of their membership of their teams are Montclair residents. Make sure they have insurance. Make sure they're willing to sign any indemnity clauses or provisions given to them, et cetera. The two teams have met those requirements. I think it would be fair, as a matter of equity, and not showing favoritism, to grant the teams a contract and use of the fields. As Ms. Richter stated, Essex Park is not acceptable because it doesn't have lights. These kids that play in the fall, remember, it gets dark around 4:45 in the afternoon, which is gonna be considered evening. They'd have to get off those fields well before then, otherwise they're playing in the dark. And bear in mind, school ends, what, 3:30 now? So only an hour and 15 minutes after they get out of school, they gotta rush to a field? And you expect them to do practice then, and get out before it gets dark? That's just unthinkable. It's untenable. And I think we're basically, in a sense, discriminating and favoring, favoring one entity over the other. Bear in mind, these two teams, I intentionally made comments about their success in the prior months, as to how well they're doing, and how many tournaments they're winning, and how they're beating other areas in Riverside, and Indio, and Riverside County, and whatnot. These teams are legit. I think they're entitled to at least use of a field. I don't like to hear of animosity or any tension between Montclair Little League and current or former residents and volunteers in baseball. I don't like that. And I think that needs to be gotten to the bottom of. But nonetheless, I think these individuals are entitled to it, and I would like to entertain the possibility of us changing our policy so that these kids can use a park. Because you know what's happening, colleagues? They're using parks in other cities and being kicked out. But they're going to other cities, and those cities are saying to them, why isn't Montclair taking care of you? And I don't like that. That does not make us look good. It's on, dirt is on our hands. So I welcome your comments, but I really would like to see something tangible happen and move. And I don't want to charge them rent, because Montclair Little League is not being charged rent. Only an $800 deposit that they get back at the end of the year, we want to charge them $1,000 a year to the travel league teams? That's, that's baloney. I get upset when I hear those figures. I understand that more travel leagues may come. I get that. But maybe we can cap it, like we cap certain other things of usage of our facilities. We can obviously do that. But anyhow, I, that's, that's just me. And these folks that are here deserve access to a field. Because these, these are, these, they're self-funding as well. And many of these families are single family, I mean, single-parent moms trying to put their kids in a program to get them off the streets and keep their grades up. And this is their last hope of doing so, and I know some of these kids. Some of these kids are in trouble, are in, close to getting into trouble, and this is the last hope. And these moms are grateful, they're thankful. They don't have the support of another co-parent with them. They don't, they're strapped for cash. They're living in low-income housing. This is their only avenue.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, I think you made your point. You know, there is a long history of the city of Montclair with the Montclair Little League, and also with the Montclair Golden Girls. I mean, it goes back over 50 years, and these have been well-established, organized leagues that we've had a relationship with. And obviously, in Montclair, you know, you know, we, again, want half youth sports. We want all of our youth to be participants in sports. And in this case, we've had this long-term agreement with the two leagues. And I guarantee you right now, if we allow travel league teams to practice at Saratoga Park, the Montclair Little League is gonna have some real issues, because they feel like now they have competition of the time for them to use the field. And at the same time, why do we have a partnership with the city of Montclair after all these years here? The issue we have, again, Montclair, and probably a lot of other cities, there is not enough room. We don't have enough parks. We don't have enough fields. What we try to do is try to have every sport represented in Montclair. In baseball, we have the Little Leagues. We have the Golden Girls. That's represented in Montclair for many years so far. I realize there's travel teams that have come up. I believe one team that just was, that spoke earlier, is only, I believe, three years old, from my understanding. So does that mean that, that league's gonna continue on for many years? Or is the league that eventually goes away? I don't know. All I know is, if we start charging free, the first problem is we don't have enough fields. The second problem is we're gonna have competition with the existing leagues, with, in this case, Montclair Little League, because we haven't agreed with them. And the third of all is, there's gonna be a maintenance issue, there's gonna be other costs. A city's gonna occur that we need somehow to resolve. So that is part of the challenge here. I understand. You know, I love to have more kids, more fields, more parks, more sports, all this stuff. You know, one of the things we don't have in Montclair is AOISO. We don't, we have, our kids have to go to Ontario to use AOISO. I wish we had a youth soccer field in Montclair. You know, that's what I, what I always dreamed. Unfortunately, we don't have the room for a soccer field. If I don't have room for a soccer field, how am I gonna have more room to have travel leagues to practice here in Montclair? So that is, you know, it's a challenge. Well, you know, we have a $2 million grant from Congressman Torres. We're gonna throw another, I don't know, how much more millions of dollars to redo Saratoga Park? That's currently under design. So we're gonna revamp that whole park. You know, one of the challenges, too, is Kingsley Park and Vernon Park. Those are school sites. In order for those parks to be renovated, we have to go through the state of California. Just, you know, it's just not just this easy process down here. So how do we improve those parks? Because, you know, Vernon Park is the, are the Golden Girls. You know, should we just do Saratoga Park, and we can't do the Golden Girls Park because, or Vernon Park because we have a bureaucracy deal in the state? Is that kind of race, you know, the gender discrimination, you know? We're gonna improve the boys' park, but not the girls' park? That's not fair, I think. So, you know, you know, and I take offense when you say, you know, you feel like we're discriminated against. We're not, we're, you know, we're not, we're not paying attention to that. That's, that's completely wrong statement to make here. The correct statement here is, we're trying to do everything we can, the city of Montclair, to support our youth. Our youth are important to us, and we're gonna do everything we can to do that. Councilor Rue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In looking at maybe a way to create a solution, not today or tomorrow, but working this through, would it be possible to coordinate with our two school districts? We have Ontario Montclair School District and the Chaffee High School District. Chaffee High School District has the jurisdiction over Montclair High School, which has a baseball field. Ontario Montclair School District has jurisdiction over several elementary schools here in the city of Montclair. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be possible that we coordinate with them and see if these travel leagues might be able to use one of the school facilities? That would help to potentially solve the problem. We don't have the, a lot of land. We've talked about a Parks Master Plan, and part of that was sharing with school districts. So would that be a possibility that we could look into? Montclair High School or one of our elementary schools, to see if those fields would be available for these young people?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Marsha, go ahead.
Yes, we did have, in fact, the letter that Ms. Ramos received. We did give the contact for Ontario Montclair School District to check to see about field use. They do charge as well. It's, it's not free, because they have maintenance and staff and that, too. So, but that is an option.
Maybe something we can, as I said, it's not to do tomorrow. Maybe we can work with them to see about reducing those fees or something like that. But I'm looking at all of our cities are land constrained. Whether it's the city of Montclair, or any other city in the inland empire in San Gabriel Valley, land constrained. We, we need the ability to start sharing with facilities that are already there. So maybe this is a direction we can look at also with Montclair High School through the Chaffee District. And be very glad to see what I can do on that. Thank you.
Again, I believe, Marsha, you said earlier that the staff is, we're looking at the fees again, once, going through the fees, determine which the adequate fees, perhaps the fee may drop through the study. Am I correct, Marsha?
Yes. Currently, the city is going through an entire fee structure study. And so once that has been completed, and the analyst has reviewed everything, then we'll, that will come before council for review and approval.
Okay, and I have one request from staff to do. I'm interested in this. Can you check the surrounding jurisdictions to see what their policy is on travel leagues? Do they charge them, is Chino Hills, Chino, Ontario, Upland, Pomona, Claremont, surrounding cities, basically, I appreciate that?
Yes.
A little memo to the entire city council.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, Item D1.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up.
Go ahead.
The, the letter that was sent out to Ms. Ramos, may I get a copy of that, please, from staff? And then, I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Mayor. You said something that I wanted to piggyback on. Now, now I am drawing a blank. Hopefully, it'll come to me. Oh, if, if we're, if we're not going to, or if we're going to charge travel leagues, then I do think we should be charging Golden Girls and Montclair Little League a nominal fee, just so they have skin in the game, just to be consistent, that's all.
Okay. Does anybody in the council agree with that? Should we charge the Little League, Montclair Little League, and Saratoga, the Golden Girls for use of the fields? Anybody in the council?
Mr. Mayor, I...
No? Go ahead, Denise.
I think we should wait to hear from the surveys and get all of the information, and then make a decision.
Okay. So, D1.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have a quick question. I want to talk about the Community Resilience Center. I think that we already do that, like when there was a, the...
Your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. When the, there was the propane tank fire, we became available, and for heat, heat cooling centers. So what will be different once this is, if this is approved? What will be different for that grant? What will happen differently?
This grant, Monica, if you want me to take that. So this will be just looking to see what might be available for possibly having another center built in our city that would be able to maybe help in a different location. The one that we have here, of course, is centrally located. But we'll be looking at maybe some other opportunities of sites where we could possibly have a different center, or a new center.
Build a new one. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
All right. So can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
Still moved.
So by, so moved by Johnson, second by...
I'll second.
Second by Martinez, electronic vote. Right. So we have a vote of 5-0. Thank you. Okay, and next item will be business items. This is to consider directions staff relayed to your request by the Jewish Federation to adopt resolution denouncing all forces of hatred. So I'm going to ask, I believe, actually, it was public speaker on this item, excuse me. Do we have a public speaker?
That's correct. Jason Moss.
Okay. This will be the time to speak. Good morning, sir. I mean, good evening, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Jason Moss, and I'm the Executive Director of the Jewish Federation of the Greater San Gabriel and Pomona Valleys. My organization represents the Jewish community from Glendale to Ranch Cucamonga and south to Whittier, an area that includes a total of 48 cities. It is, it is within this role tonight that I'm here to speak to you. Anti-Semitism, considered the oldest, to be the oldest form of hatred, is often referred to as the, quote, "canary in the coal mine", because it is often a precursor to other forms of hatred. And as we have seen, when anti-Semitism is prevalent, it is only a matter of time before more hatred is espoused and targets others. Over the last several years, we have witnessed an unprecedented rise in anti-Semitic incidents and attacks. Each year, the Anti-Defamation League does an annual audit of the number of reported anti-Semitic incidents and attacks. And the numbers are staggering. Since 2016, when there were a reported 1,267 incidents... Since 2016, when there were a reported 1,267 incidents, there's been an almost 300% increase between then and 2022, when that total raised to 3,697. And we know anecdotally that these figures are probably two to three times even higher because they do not include the unreported incidents each year. In May, the ADL released its hate in the Golden State Report and reported there was a 41% increase here in California between '21 and '22. And over the last year or so, between national news stories and coverage, the launch of the nationwide campaign called hashtag Stand Up To Jewish Hate, which is symbolized on the blue square on my lapel, there's been a significant effort to raise awareness of this issue. And more recently, in May, the White House launched its national strategy to counter anti-Semitism. This national approach to counter anti-Semitism is the first of its kind here in the U.S. and includes over 100 different action steps, touching on all levels of government, from federal, state, county, and local. In fact, this evening, the city of Montclair can do its part and support this national strategy by directing Montclair City Staff to develop a resolution that publicly denounces anti-Semitism and all forms of hatred, as I have asked other city leaderships to do as well. By moving forward and supporting this effort, you will show that these incidents taking place across the country do not reflect the values and ideals of the city of Montclair and its citizens. As city leaders, I am asking you to use your voice tonight. Stand up and show that you're not okay with the climate of hatred in the U.S. today and that you're committing the city of Montclair to do something about it. While some people might say that passing a resolution is only a symbolic gesture, I can assure you that it carries significant weight, especially for those that are impacted by the rise of hatred. It shows everyone that the city of Montclair stands with those that are targeted and that you will not tolerate any kind of hatred within your city. And if you move forward with this effort and ultimately approve a resolution, you will add Montclair to the growing list of cities that my Jewish Federation's been working on. Of the 48 cities in our area, 16 cities have passed similar resolutions. They include Clermont, Upland, Monrovia, Alhambra, Sierra Madre, Temple City, San Gabriel, Pasadena, Whittier, Diamond Bar, Walnut, South Pasadena, Ontario, Glendale, Arcadia, and Rosemead. Tomorrow night, Glendora will be voting on their own resolution. I think we can all agree that since you cannot legislate away hate or anti-Semitism, racism, or really any type of form of hatred, additional steps must be taken. So, my organization is also asking all those 48 cities also to go to the next level by bringing together representatives of other targeted groups in order to share ideas and work with each city's leadership to develop a robust citywide plan to address, combat, and respond to all forms of hatred. Tonight, make a statement and a commitment to do what you can to help eradicate anti-Semitism and all forms of hatred by taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Lopez, you request this time on the agenda, so it's your show.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moss, for coming and speaking. First of all, I know you had sent us a letter initially back in March, which was eight months ago, and a follow-up letter in June, which was two months ago. I guess better late than never in addressing the issue and getting hopefully a resolution to stand with the 16 cities and make us number 17. Actually, we're probably going to be 18 because Glendora is going to beat us tomorrow. I did want to ask that this resolution come forward, or at least we entertain this idea, but I wanted to ask, Mr. Moss, just for clarification, you're not specifically asking for solely a resolution condemning anti-Semitism, you're asking for all forms of hate, correct?
Correct. The reason why I brought anti-Semitism to the forefront is because the Jewish organization that I represent, that's the concern we have. However, hate is hate, and the idea behind trying to target one group's hatred over somebody else's is not something that we're comfortable with. As the representative of the Jewish community in between Glendale and Ranch Cucamonga, anti-Semitism is at the forefront of my mind, but anti-Semitism is a form of hatred. And the idea behind that is if we can eradicate hate of all kinds, it's important. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to share with you colleagues something that I've never really shared about me, unless those that ask, but shortly before my grandfather had died, relatives had done a genealogy report on our family just to figure out where the heck we all came from. Because on my mother's side of the family, it's tended to be a little bit more mixed than it does my father's side. My father's lineage is basically a straight line and my mother's is branched out, looks like a genuine tree and goes all out in every direction as to our background and who we are. Found out that on my great-grandmother's side, so my great-great-grandmother is, has Jewish lineage descending out of Spain. And that's common, very common for a lot of Latinos, Latins in America today, where we do have a lot of Jewish ancestry and roots in our lineage because of the Sephardic Jews being pushed out of the Mediterranean and Arab countries, going into Europe, and then them not becoming, not converting there in Europe, making their way to the States, or Latin America, rather, in the States where it was a little bit more free and freedom of religion was a respected and honored tradition, thus the founding of America. There is some mingling of Jewish roots with Latin culture, and I am the product of one. Every now and then, I do wear my yarmulke. Every now and then, I do attend a Seder dinner, celebrate Passover and whatnot. And several members of my family have converted and are practicing Jews today, one of which is my own mother. But I wanted to touch on the importance of the blue square real quickly. These blue square lapel pins that I'm wearing and Jason's wearing, and I have some here, I'm going to pass them over to you colleagues, one for you each. You're welcome. The size of it, it was, back in March, there was a multimillion-dollar campaign, the first time in the history of modern American television, that there was a push on TV to highlight the plight of Jewish hate. And on the screen was that square, and it only took up 2.4% of the screen, which is actually the size of the Jewish population of the United States. And yet, the Jewish people are victims of 55% of all religious hate crimes, including vandalism, violence, and threats in the United States. So, 2.4% of the population is subjected to 55% of the hate. And that's very disproportionate, and it's unfortunate. I would like for us, as we similarly did in 2021 with the Anti-Asian Hate Resolution, and that's in our agenda, to perhaps use that as a template or even use the templates that Ontario adopted, and I believe Upland is in our agenda packet, use those as templates to highlight and stress that, one, we condone anti-Semitism. We obviously took a position on Asian, against Asian hate, and let's reiterate that point, but let's also include all other forms of hate. Hate is hate no matter what side of the political aisle or philosophy or spectrum one falls on. In the newspaper, it was, this is timely, in the Daily Bulletin, just four or five days ago, it was reported that there, a new organization or a new conglomerate is being formed to fight antisemitism, and it is to work with law enforcement. You have the so-called Jewish Security Alliance, the Anti-Defamation League, and the Jewish Federation working together to combine resources to combat Jewish hate and to help mobilize law enforcement in helping to identify that and combat that and hopefully address it before it gets to a much serious situation. But to my point about all hate, I'll give you two examples where we see on the news where incidents of hate involving either the Jewish community or other groups of any kind is far removed from here more often than not. And thankfully, that is the case because we do not have a proliferation of hateful incidents in this city and in the area like other regions unfortunately do. However, most recently, two examples of hate, just on Friday night, on August 18th, in Cedar Glen, a shop owner, trying to get her name here, I don't have the name, I apologize, a shop owner known as Lori was shot and killed in Cedar Glen here in San Bernardino County simply because she had a gay pride flag hanging on her business. And because a person decided that that was so offensive to him, he shot her, and she lay dead on the ground until cops came. That's unacceptable. Just recently as well, a little closer to home, reported in the Daily Bulletin on August 3rd, Chino Valley School Board President Threatened, Suspect Arrested. Chino Valley School Board President Sonia Shaw was threatened. Person said that they would kill her, her husband, and her kids. The victim was, or the suspect was identified to be an individual from Oakland. Thankfully, he did not succeed in carrying out his threat. I would point out that Sonia Shaw happens to be a very conservative individual, an elected official in the county. And then you had a business owner who is of a more progressive and liberal persuasion, both subjected to threats of hate. Hate knows no political agenda, no ideology. There's bad apples in every community, and unfortunately, they make the rest bad and evil. I would ask that in the resolution, that there be language, specifically that one's religious beliefs are to be respected as well. One should not be hated for their religious beliefs. Again, whether they are of a progressive or liberal persuasion, or if they happen to be of a conservative evangelical persuasion, they should not be hated simply because of their beliefs. Most recently, the Catholic community took a hit all over the abortion issue and contraception and coverage of healthcare, a coverage of abortion and healthcare. And crisis pregnancy centers were bombed, threatened, Molotov cocktails thrown at them, only Catholic entities, and that's a shame. We've had Mormon organizations attacked as well. And on the flip side, we've had many Muslim temples or mosques, rather, attacked shortly after 9/11, and that's unacceptable. You cannot win an argument by implementing and instituting hate. If your ideas are so weak that you must use violence and hate to get about your end, then your very principal idea and mantra needs to be checked and challenged. And at the same time, like the individual that was shot in Cedar Glen, one should not be killed, threatened, or intimidated for their beliefs, whether they are conservative, liberal, Democrat, Republican, or anything in between. I myself have been subjected to threats on my life and on my family's life. Most recently, threatened to be DOCS, the term of identifying your address, and folks going out there on your, in front of your house to camp out. They're not out there to sing kumbaya, they're out there to intimidate and threaten. But in about 14 years ago, 2009, at my employment in Anaheim, I had the FBI come out and the Anaheim PD come out because I had threats on my life and a phone call come to the office that I should check my brakes, that the wires were cut, and that there might be bombs in my car, underneath my car. I've lived with that for 20-some years, still living with it today simply because of my beliefs. But there are millions of others because of their beliefs and their religious affiliations that are getting mocked. You've got Sikhs that are unmistakingly and wrongfully being accused of being Muslims and therefore should be hated. Many individuals that wear yarmulkes get beaten. And Orthodox Jews that have their curls on the side of their face get attacked for what they wear and their hairstyles. It all needs to stop. Thankfully, Montclair does not have this problem, but I pray we never get there. And I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I apologize that it's taken eight months to address it, but we're here. So, colleagues, I would entertain your thoughts on the matter and on the actual language of the resolution itself. I am most curious to see what that would be because I think that would be telling. And thank you.
Councilman Roux.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I had not seen this letter in my box until Councilmember Lopez brought it to our attention at a council meeting, so therefore I wasn't aware of it. And once he did, I appreciated his bringing this forward. Before I go into other comments, I would remind everybody, there is, there's something that was written in the 1930s by Reverend Martin Niemoller. He was a German Lutheran pastor living under Nazi rule. He said, "At first, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak up because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak out." I learned that from a fairly young age. My mother, who resided in New York City, told us the stories of the refugees from Nazi Germany who were coming to New York City. Many of them had lost everything, not just their personal possessions and their fortune. You can find a way to replace that. Some of them were the only members of their family left. They had all suffered in the concentration camps of the Holocaust. She also taught us that we are all God's children deserving of respect, dignity, and equality. There is no room for hatred of any kind. You can disagree with somebody, and spirited debate is really what helped build this country, but not hatred. You shouldn't be in a position where you hate somebody because of their race, religion, their creed, their color, their lifestyle. I can go on and on. If any of you have been to Arlington National Cemetery, you will see the gravestones. They're marked with crosses, the stars of David, the crescent, and many other symbols of one's religion. All those young men and women died in the service of this country. We live in an age where sadly, because, and there's two sides with quite a bit of social media, which I do not engage in, allows somebody with a very, very quick tongue to start making statements about other people. We've heard this from people at some of the highest levels of this country. And sometimes that hatred is masked in nice words. They use smoke signals to go to other people and incite them. Hatred of any kind is not acceptable. I hope our resolution will include all hatred, period. Mr. Moss is correct that anti-Semitism is at the root of a lot of this, and we need to make sure it's all hatred. Councilmember Lopez brought up about the lady in Lake Arrowhead. No one should be murdered because of their belief. We know the anti-Asian hatred that has gone on, especially in portions of Orange County where there are larger numbers of Asian population. Young man was killed outside a gas station simply because he was Asian. We've seen this across our country over the years for all religions, all creeds. We've seen this across our country over the years for all religions, all creeds. We know what happened from Reconstruction all the way through to the Civil Rights Era and even today in portions of the South and other parts of America, where the hatred came with men on horseback, wearing white robes, carrying a Bible and a cross. To my form of Christianity, that's antithetical to what we believe in. We need to, as a society, grow to become better. And this is a step forward. And I've lived in this community my entire life. And I don't recall any formal forms of anti-anything. People may say things on the street to somebody. They'll do that. But I don't think it has risen to the level that we've seen recently in other communities. I hope it doesn't. This is a good step in the right direction. I would conclude by, there's so much I could say on this, but conclude by letting, or it's something very simple. When we look at who we are, we look in the mirror, we see ourselves. What is the person you see? All, they're all little children. And as Dr. King said, little children are not taught to hate. Let's take lessons from this. Let's support our Jewish friends and indeed everyone who is a victim of hate. And Councilmember Lopez, somebody mentioned about putting together a group to dialogue. And perhaps you would be, because you brought this forward, a person who would be involved with that with Mr. Moss. But I do not know what the disposition of the council will be. I assume, Mr. Lopez, you'll make a motion. If that's the case, I'd make a second for it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, I want to reassure the public that in Montclair, antisemitism, and of course, all forms of hatred is unacceptable and not tolerated in this city. Any hate crime committed as defined under federal state law obviously will be investigated by the Montclair Police Department. I'm not going to repeat everything all my two colleagues said now. I do agree with the balance of their comments. I will say this, that, you know, in 2023, I thought we were past hate. I thought this country grew up. Obviously, this country has lots of periods of hates with different race groups and religion and sexual orientation and gender and all the good stuff. And I thought we were past all that. And I'll be frank with you, I'm scared where we're headed for. When I say hate, you know, let's just talk about hate. Let's talk about hate in our political system we have, especially in the federal government. Especially what happened on January 6th, 2020. Talk about hate on that day. That scares me, that this country has come to that point. I'm not going to get political, but we have a former president, I think he has chewed off hate in this country. Creating an organization of hate in this country. Our judicial system, our law enforcement are now under attack. You know, under attack. We have people now in the federal government, in the judicial department, who are being targeted. In the state of Georgia, again, the judicial department being targeted because of hate. You know? Law enforcement right here, police departments. You know, we go back to the George Foreman incident, of course, that was hate that was committed by the officers. But look at all the hate that took place towards police officers. Just doing their job, decent people trying their job. Hate. Is this the country we've become is just hate? We just dislike people for their beliefs or their politics, their sexual orientation, their religion, you know, their nationality? Is that what this country is coming to? You know? Are we, are we going to be frank now, you're a D or an R? Because if you're an R, I hate you, or you're a D, I hate you? No, we've got members of Congress don't even talk to each other anymore. Can you believe that? Democrats, Republicans, because of hate? Got members of Congress going around talking about hate. On both aisles. That's how we have become here in 2023. Can you believe that? How many of you thought we were past that six, seven years ago? That this country's grown up? So this council obviously talked about the resolution two years ago on the, regarding the Asian community. I know Councilmember Martinez, I think a year ago, there was a mass shooting, which involved the LGBT community. And that put that away, other communities that have been targeted in mass shootings. And I think she brought it up. And I think at that time, we said, well, this council's already taken a verbal position, a resolution position. And if you recall that, Councilmember Martinez, I know you brought that up. So what I'd like to do is, I think the city of Upland did it correctly. I think this is, I mean, I respect the city of Ontario and what they did. But I think the city of Upland's resolution is, does everything we want. And we are here with your organization. If there are, if there is events going on where you want members of the elected officials to participate, we will be there. But I think Upland's resolution does everything we want because the next time I get a request or the city gets a request of a letter, a resolution, something, we have a document out, we can pinpoint to them. This resolution was adopted here in August 21, 2023. That all hate, racism, religious or ethnic discriminations, incitement of violence, targeting minorities is unacceptable in the city of Montclair. And those, again, who commit hate crimes as defined by law will be investigated here in Montclair. So I pretty much like this resolution here. I think maybe one of the wheras is, because since Montclair has, we haven't had any incidents. I know Upland had an incident, I believe they had two incidents. They had an incident earlier this year where children in school, they did drawings or letters or some of that nature. That was hatred towards children of African-American. And I think there was leaflets dropped off in Upland, and also in Ontario. Leaflets dropped off that was pretty much discriminatory towards the Jewish community that we call that. So I believe that was a response by the city of Upland of those two incidents. I think that, maybe that wheras goes out. But there's Section 1, in this case, they say the Upland, oh, this Montclair City Council rejects hate motivated acts as an attack on the values of our society and the fundamental tenets of the United States Constitution. Section 2, the United States Council, Upland City Council affirms the basic rights of all people to live in a safe environment, free from discrimination, intimidation, threats, or fear. Section 3, the city of Montclair will investigate all credible reports of hate crimes and incidents and threats against minorities and hold perpetrators of those crimes, incidents, and threats accountable. Section 4, the city council calls upon Montclair residents to speak out against hate, bullying, discrimination, violence. I don't know about Section 5, the California, the Quality Act needs to be there now. I'll let staff decide that. And then Section 6 and 7 are just process sections there. But I will go with this. And then I would just ask the city manager and the city attorney to make any modifications. If they believe so, that it should be added or modified. But I'll go with the Upland resolution. Any comments, Councilman Lopez?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I am fine using the city of Upland's resolution as a template. I would request, one, two, three, four, the fourth wheras down on page 104 of our packet, that it specifically add the characteristic or category age. And then the, that's one. And then religion also state, religion or faith. You might think that's redundant, but for some in the, it is not redundant. Thank you, Mr. Rue, for agreeing. It is not. So religion or faith, include age. And then this particular phrase, political affiliation or persuasion. Because unfortunately, like the mayor alluded to, we have people attacking other people simply for their political views, right and left. And that crap needs to stop. So I would like age specifically listed in there because they're omitted right now. And there is ageism discrimination happening. And then religion or faith. And then political affiliation or persuasion. Want those, that verbiage in there? And you have my vote. But I will, I will move that as such.
Councilman Martinez.
Yeah, I would like to add as well, gender expression. I think we've learned over the past few years that encompassed in the LGBTQ community is, it's not just about gender and sexual orientation, but there's many other things to consider like expression. And, you know, I would agree that I would like the city manager and city attorney to be able to add and delete as necessary.
So you want to add, I'm sorry, gender expression?
Yeah, right. So we have gender, gender expression, sexual orientation. There may be more words that I don't have off the top of my head that would be more inclusive. So the more inclusive, the better.
Well, maybe sexual orientation is probably the best word to use. I think that's a legal word, and maybe we just add that. So a word that we're as is violent crimes, threats of violence, targeting of religious, racial, ethnic minorities. We can add the word age. Ageism, political, what was the political?
Affiliation or persuasion.
Political affiliation, said?
Affiliation or persuasion.
Persuasion. I think there's another word, how about beliefs? I think that encompasses me, beliefs. And then sexual orientation.
Mayor Dupree, that's already in there. There is a difference between gender and gender expression.
Oh, I see that there, okay.
Yeah. The transgender community is one example.
We will add all the protected classes under California law, which is responsive to each one of your requests and more so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we just add the protective class of discrimination. Ed, you stated that? Ed? Yeah. And I think this wheras in the past several years, violent crimes, threats of violence, targeting. I just think we just say inclusive of all the protected classes. Maybe that's probably the best way to say it. And then try to pinpoint certain classes, sounds like in here.
Mayor Dupree, could I make another comment before we vote? So the comment was made that we don't have to worry about this in Montclair. And I'm not sure, Councilmember Lopez, what you're referring to, whether you meant hate in general. But if that is the case, you know, I just want to be clear that that's not true. That is a very broad generalization. And one example is when we discussed, for instance, the LGBTQ community and hate, both times that we've discussed it recently, we've had a resident come in here to specifically degrade members of our LGBTQ community, calling them mentally ill, is the word that he used, the term that he used. And so I do hope that in enacting a resolution that is all encompassing and that does include every single protected category, I hope that we continue to do what we have done as a city, which is fly the, you know, electronic banner equivalent of the LGBTQ flag, the Asian-American flag. I want us to be visible and vocal. I don't want us to file this away in some filing cabinet and say, yeah, that's in there, you're protected. I want us to continue making the strides that we have made on social media, physically, what we've done. The banner is fantastic. I want us to continue doing that. I want us to acknowledge, as you have done, Mayor Dupree, every month, the different holidays that are occurring during that month. I love to see that happening. I hope that we continue to have residents come to our council meetings and discuss issues that they see in the community. Thank you very much for being here and for providing us that letter, Mr. Moss. I apologize that it took so long. I believe that most of our council members did not receive the letter or perhaps received it recently. So, you know, I love the idea behind this and including everything in it. I definitely believe that Montclair is a city that wants to protect and do the best for its residents. And I just want to be sure that we are not just passively protecting our residents, but actively, every single community that needs our help, we are actively representing them and supporting them and letting them know that we are a safe community to be, that we, as your council members, as your government, are going to protect you and we are going to do what's in your best interest. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Lopez.
Just to address the, to expand on my comment. When I stated that Montclair has been blessed in the sense that we have been so far exempt from an incident of hate, I'm referring to a more general sense of a massive incident happening. We've been blessed and spared that. No killings, no shootings of that kind. Of course, stabbings or things. Or none of our churches have been targeted or attacked. I remember the incident that you're alluding to with the resident that spoke. I will say that as uncomfortable as comments are made at the podium by a member of the public, so long as they do not threaten an individual to kill, harm, whatever, an individual or a class of people or property, as uncomfortable as those comments are, they are entitled to make those comments. I will say that dissent is not tantamount to discrimination and a differing opinion is not tantamount to hatred. And even though you might agree with the individual and it might be repulsive in the language he used, he's entitled to use them. And that is his prerogative. And I think his language perhaps will have a negative effect and people will not be won over to his side based on the rhetoric he chooses.
All right, we'll take a two-minute break. Mr. Starr has used the restroom, so we'll just wait for him to come back.
Okay, we're back in session again. So I do want to say this, that my church has been attacked twice by hate.
That's right.
First time was spray paint on the church's front doors. And then second time was destruction of the Virgin Mary statue in front of the church. So that's hate that's happened in Montclair. Pretty sure there's been other hates in Montclair that we may have forgotten about or aren't aware. Nevertheless, I'd like to make a motion that we just adopt this Upland resolution with some of the modifications that the council brought up, including that we add the, all the protective classes as defined under law and to ensure that the resolution encompasses all beliefs, gender, religion, genders, everything else that, again, is under the protective classes. So can I get a second?
Second.
All right. And then with, part of that motion includes that the city manager and the city attorney make the modifications and returns back to the city council for formal adoption. Who made the second?
Lopez.
Lopez made the second, let's just vote on it. Let's just vote on it. And with that, it's five zero. Mr. Moss, thank you for being here today. And, uh, we'll get you something as soon as it's adopted, we'll get you a copy of that resolution. Thank you. So now we'll go down to communications, uh, city attorney.
You do have the council workshop matter just about.
Yes, we do. We have a city council workshop on, uh, September the 18th, uh, about 5:45 on the North Montclair Street Improvement Master Plan presentation. Any objections? If not, so ordered.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, are we, um, are we going dark the week of the fourth? I know Labor Day is the fourth, or are we meeting on the fifth?
Yeah, that's under, uh, yeah, mayor's comments.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see that.
Okay. Now we'll go down to city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the one item to ask the council members to meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations regarding the associations listed. And other than that, I have nothing else this evening.
City manager.
Yes, unfortunately, I do want to announce that Benson Avenue will not be open tomorrow as previously planned. It will not open until August the 25th at 9:00 PM. This is because of some grout that was used in the repair work and the overpass over Benson Avenue did not meet Caltrans standards and that project has to be recompleted in order for the, uh, bridge to be improved to the degree that Caltrans specifies. So in order to make those corrections, it will remain closed until 9:00 PM on August the 25th.
Yes, and I got a call today while I did communicate with, uh, Chief Executive Officer Ray Wolf as S B C T A. So there, he assured me they're trying to get it, get it open as early as Friday or by next week for sure. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Starr? So, thank you. Again, uh, I know I spoke earlier on the great work on our staff and I just wanted to say that Congressman Torres did contact me, uh, yesterday afternoon, asking how we were doing and stating that if we need the assistance on the federal level to a contractor. So just want to let you know that. Uh, yes, uh, as far as the meeting on September 5th, September 4th, which is a Monday Labor Day, um, we're asking to cancel this, this meeting, which will be scheduled September 5th. Any objections? If not, then so ordered. And, um, I do want to state on the Panera, I'm, I'm happy that after 18 months of, uh, after adoption by the planning commission, the demolition has finally occurred. Um, I kind of, uh, helped work with the developer, um, trying to get all the parties, or at least one party, to sign the, the, uh, the agreement, um, to allow this Panera project to actually take place. And, um, I didn't do a whole lot. I, I talked to another party, but, uh, really was up between the developer and another party to work out their term differences and they were, uh, they were able to accomplish that. But I did let them know that Panera is important to Montclair and obviously the, the other owners I was speaking to has, um, several businesses here in Montclair and just want to let them know that those businesses also are important to Montclair. So I want to start with, uh, Councilmember Rue.
Due to the somewhat late hour, I will try to keep this short. First, uh, Mr. City Manager, I did ask at the last council meeting if we had sent a letter to Senator Rubio to support the Regional Housing Trust. Did you find a copy of that letter?
Well, I don't recall signing a letter of that nature. I don't believe the League of California Cities, uh, I don't believe League of California Cities put on urgent, urgent, uh, call for the letter, but, uh, I'm not sure the city manager, maybe he's a separate letter that staff sent out.
Well, we had talked about joining the St. Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. I know we had a conversation with the senator, but her, uh, she had a bill on it and I thought we would have written a letter to support that if we were serious about joining it. I realize there's one in San Bernardino County, but we can belong to two or three or four. And the one in San Bernardino County will take a little bit longer to get up to speed. So, um, we did not send a letter, Mr. City Manager?
Are working with her staff. Unfortunately, the legislation that she is introducing right now has nothing to do with regional. It's more of a statewide housing trust fund. She has migrated away from the position about a regional trust fund and wants to focus on statewide. So we are working with her on that, trying to determine exactly where she is going with it, and then we will provide the letter of support.
But we didn't send one on the Regional Housing Trust then?
No, because that's not her direction right now.
No, at the time, there was a bill, your.
That was last year's.
That was last year. Yes, we did support that one.
We submitted that. We did, we submitted something to have the interest.
I asked last meeting if we'd sent a letter to support that because the bill did not make it. And you said you'd find one. That's what I'm asking. Did we send that letter?
Last year, we did send a letter of support for that particular bill. That bill failed and she is now focusing on a statewide regional.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Right.
To make sure we had one for the Regional Housing Trust
Yes.
At that time.
And we are also supportive of San Bernardino County's. In fact, we are working, uh, closely with San Bernardino County on the, uh, development of the requirements related to the county's trust fund.
I, you know, I, I wish her bill had passed because that would have been, meant money we could start instantly using. San Bernardino County is going to take quite a while. Um, at the last council meeting, we did have some parents talking about flashing red stop signs at schools and, uh, more safety requirements. And as I said at the time, the city can do what they can do, the school district can do what they can do, but it's really up to parents to work and make sure their children are safe. We're doing everything we can. To that end, I contacted the Ontario Montclair School District and they indeed told me that students can be on campus as much as a half an hour before school starts. The issue is becoming that many parents exit their children street side, not curb side. And that's dangerous. It shouldn't happen. Uh, you know, adults are adults, everybody's busy, but you can get your child to school a half an hour early. Please try to do so. And I know I attended El Camino Vernon and Montclair High School. My mother with five children was able to always get us to school on time and we never had to exit street side. We always exited curb side. That's safety. I want to note two dates that happened this month. One, August 14th is when the bill passed to allow women to have the right to vote. It was 103 years ago. Women had been fighting for many, many years for that right to vote. And it certainly is important and it has been enshrined that way in our constitution and that's important. I also want to note that on August 14th was the commemoration of VJ Day, Victory in Japan, which concluded the Second World War. It was one of the most bloody wars in history. At the conclusion of that war, the population of the world was 3% less than in, than five years before in 1940. And to all of those in that generation quickly passing from the scene, we salute you and the work you did. Thank you.
Councilman Lopez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, real quickly, a few items. I'll try to move fast. Uh, August 17th, uh, last Thursday, I attended the Montclair Chamber Night Under the Stars event. Kudos to my colleague to my left, Ms. Johnson and, um, Jordy and the board, um, the chamber board and all for the first, what I hope is the first annual, uh, event. I, I left maybe an hour and a half into it with, well, how many attendees would you say were there?
Seventy.
Seventy? That was pretty darn good. And I think, uh, uh, a time was, a good time was had by all and, uh, everyone kept munching on the food and drinking the wine. So, uh, it was, uh, it was a fun event to be at to mingle and, uh, the weather cooperated. A cool breeze came in right around six o'clock, 6:30. So that was great. Two, three city related items. I just wanted to get, uh, of course, with the issue concerning the discussion about the travel teams and the Little League issue, uh, many of the folks there were coming to me and saying, well, what the heck is happening? Why is there not any movement on Saratoga? So can you, could you, Mr. Man, uh, City Manager, provide a brief update as to where we are at with Saratoga, Saratoga Park and the renovations or status?
Well, there's plenty of movement on Saratoga. The design of the product, of the project is with L D King. They are working on that. Um, and in addition to that, we've secured $2 million from the federal government in relation to improvements to Saratoga Park. And as Mayor Dutre indicated earlier this evening, the city is willing and ready to commit additional bond funds towards the development of the project. So, uh, until we get the plan from L D King and until the council adopts the park's master plan, um, we require that direction, uh, as far as the adoption of the park master plan. And we will be bringing the L D King plan to the city council, uh, once they are able to incorporate the elements from the park master plan into their total design. So, uh, I think at this point in time, we are fairly progressed in the development of plans related to, uh, Saratoga Park.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, another issue of concern, I know the mayor was approached by the topic, but, um, got a phone call from a resident who was concerned about the speeding issue on Montevista near Kingsley. Um, I know a home on the southeast corner was unfortunately, uh, hit with a car that came through their fence. I know the fence has since been repaired, but, um, I know there's issues regarding the 80 percentile and speeding issues and whatnot. But if we could please, once again, look at speeding issues on Montevista, that'd be appreciated, especially with school in session. Um, I, if we could just find a way to get folks to slow the heck down, that'd be great. I know that's the, uh, million dollar question or, or solution that eludes many cities. But nonetheless, if we could, uh, if we could look into that or maybe even beef up patrols around that area to slow things down for a bit, that'd be great. And in relation to that, um, I know at the chamber event last Thursday, Monica, you'd stated that coming to council soon will be a, um, completion report on the stop sign issue. And then shortly after that, with grant money, additional, uh, stop signs will be erected. Uh, I just am anxious to see the list and the map, as you stated, of where we are all with that. Some traffic updates, folks. Since we're not going to be here September 4th or 5th, uh, please take note that starting Friday, September 8th, Friday, September 8th at 10:00 PM through Monday, September 11th at 5:00 AM, Montevista Under the 10 Freeway is scheduled to close. Montevista Under the 10 will be closed completely as well as the on and off ramps, uh, for westbound and eastbound Montevista. It's basically the artery at Montevista and the 10 will be completely shut down from September 8th through September 11th. Please avoid it, use Indian Hill, uh, use Central, but that's going to be impacted. But anyhow, uh, be prepared, folks. Make, adjust your routes accordingly. Um, and then this coming Friday, sorry, uh, Friday at 7:00 PM will be the first, uh, home game for Montclair High School football, the varsity team. 7:00 PM, Montclair High School, they'll be facing Roland Heights. Um, so let's, uh, let's go out and support them. Of course, remember not too long ago, just a year ago, they were at CIF in the championship game. Um, and let's support our guys and let's get them to that CIF game once again. So, uh, Friday, 7:00 PM, Friday Night Lights is back. Montclair High School, Go Cavs plays Roland Heights. And just, uh, a note, it's good to see Dave Allen in the audience. Uh, many people kind of get nervous when you appear at council meetings, uh, but I, I enjoy the, uh, the columns and I'm, uh, curious to see what the paper will in store with respect to Montclair. But good to see you, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I just want to recognize, uh, Councilmember Johnson, I know that she worked very hard this last week on this event. I'm sorry I missed it. I was in Arizona. My daughter's going to ASU, so ASU, excuse me. And so that's why I was not there. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a couple of quick things in respect for the late hour. Um, number one, um, I attended a meeting with Senator Rubio last Friday. She had an event in West Covina, uh, where she did a blood drive and also she was, she offered many, uh, a lot of information about the services that her office provides. So I would encourage, um, any people who are looking for assistance to just go online and look at everything that she, all of, I didn't realize that she did all that she does, but there are quite a long, a lot of things that she does and I don't have time to go through the whole list, but go and look at it. Number two, um, we had this wonderful rain that we needed and I didn't want, but we needed it and we got it. But now that the sun is back out, we all need to look at our outdoor spaces for, um, standing water because in a tablespoon of water, um, the eggs, the mosquito eggs can be in that little tablespoon of water. And the next thing you know, you try to go outside of your, to the outside part of your property and you're, you know, attacked by mosquitoes. So the best way to stop that is to go now while before the mosquitoes have laid their eggs and empty everything, even a tiny little thing. Get, get all of the standing water out so that you can live in peace, uh, in the next couple of months. And then very quickly, I want to talk about, uh, I wanted to thank again all of the Montclair restaurants who attended the, who provided food at the night of, uh, Under the Stars event. Mr. Used Chinese Food, Los Portales, the Mexican restaurant, Los Carnales Restaurant, Costco, Magnificent Cuisine and Sushi One Spot. And also I wanted to commend Vendetta Brewing for brewery for attending and pouring all the beer. Uh, thank you again to Mayor Dutre for the donation of a case of wine. Uh, thank you to Councilman Bill Rue for donation of a case of wine and, and I donated a case of wine too. So, um, there was a lot of beer and wine and food. So it was a good, uh, time had by all. Uh, it was supposed to be Under the Stars, of course. We realized about a month before, we had all these lights planned and we realized about a month before, the lights don't come on till eight o'clock when everybody's leaving. But other than that, it was a, it was a good, um, it was a good event. Thank you for everybody who came, for all of you who helped, like Councilwoman Martinez came to help with the furniture and setup. Uh, and I think, um, your dad guarded the cash box for us. So there was, everybody chipped in and helped and I really appreciate everyone's efforts. That's all I have tonight.
All right, Councilman Martinez.
Well, I was going to thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson. It, it turned out great. Um, I, I was really thrilled that we had so many different restaurants that showed up to provide food for the event and, um, I couldn't stay, my diet wouldn't let me. But it, it was, uh, it turned out really nice, the way that it was set up. And, um, obviously the chamber is run so fantastically that, that you're able to put that event together as well as the, uh, the board and the ambassadors. I am a huge supporter for all things farmer's market, art walks, you know, wine tasting, food tasting events, and I would love to see more of that in our community. Uh, we need places to go and things to do. We need to keep ourselves busy. And then you touched on it, but a few weeks ago, Montclair Police had a blood drive and last Friday, Senator Rubio had a blood drive. I'm getting lots of emails asking for my blood, so I thought I'd, uh, just let everyone know if you can, try to find a place to donate. Um, it, it's really needed right now especially. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You have minutes in your agenda. Uh, Dave Allen, I know it's been five year, almost five years last time you were here because, yes, five years ago because you were an article and I was not looking very good that day for something stupid I did during the election, if you recall that. But it's five years ago. I know you expanded your, uh, your area of coverage. And I know you've been going into some exciting meetings for the city of San Bernardino, Reno Valley City Council, you went to the Temecula, Unifies Glutestric Meeting, I believe with the Chino Valley if you hear recently, if I'm correct. But nevertheless, hopefully we're somewhat interesting here for your article that I'm looking forward to seeing, maybe on Friday, I suspect, or, yeah. So David, great to see you again. So with that, we're going to closed session.